Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve January 5th, 2016, regular meeting minutes. I second the motion, it's a discussion. All those in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We'll recess from the county commissioners' meeting and move into the solid waste district commissioners' meeting. And turn this over to you. I guess we need the approval of the minutes first.
Ah, yes, I move to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2015.
Okay, I'll second the motion, it's a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On the resolutions, are there any comments concerning any of these? No? Okay.
Motion to approve the January 12th, 2016 bills as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Finance.
I'll second the motion, it's a discussion. We have a roll call.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the January 12th, 2016 journal vouchers.
I'll second the motion, it's a discussion. We have a roll call.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the January 12th, 2016, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
It's a discussion, I'll second the motion, it's a discussion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Turn it over now for discussion.
Under pending items, back in December, I brought in what we would like to change for the commercial contracts. We have not had a price increase on those any eight years that I've been director. And I'm sure that our rate increases are modest at that, but something that's necessary. So, I didn't know if the board had a chance to look at that, make any decisions. But, you know, even though fuel has gone down, labor and maintenance or repairs has not. And so, I just wanted to know if the board would like to take action on that today.
If we don't have it in front of us, I do remember reading it on, do you have a copy of that?
I unfortunately did not bring that. I was bringing the bigger issue today. At worst-case scenarios, it's something we can take action on next Thursday.
Later today.
Or later today, that's fine.
Yeah, we probably need to look at it. I remember reading it and I remember thinking at the time that it was reasonable.
Right, right.
And I don't recall any objections, but I think since we don't have it.
Right, no, that's fine, because right now Dawn, Dawn will be renewing a lot of the commercial contracts. So she's kind of in a holding pattern right now till we make that decision.
And I have to say that the change between that is, the containers that they currently have, they can only be able to put cardboard in it or plastic glass and cans in it. And the new ones will be all of the above. So, they'll have less containers.
Yeah, we have actually lost a few commercial accounts because others have opted to go to single stream. And that's what we want to do, since we're going to drive the whole county that way, it just makes sense.
Okay. So, how important is it that we do it today? Should we just put it on your next agenda, or should we look at it again later today?
If you could do it today, I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay, so, we'll put it on for, right after lunch.
Nothing else, will that be all right?
Okay, perfect, perfect, thank you. Item B, Camp Ravenna recycling. We were contacted by Camp Ravenna, they want to do recycling. And just a little side note, I, as a private citizen, I serve as, on the restoration board. And we have, first of all, there's a couple things. I just can't look at that facility and say, pay us. I think when you've got men and women who are putting their lives on the line for us to sit here in freedom. So I think my recommendation to the board would be, we do it at no cost. They are technically a government agency out there, and we do have a resolution. I cannot remember the number off the top of my head, but a number of years we did pass it. Government agencies within the county would be recycling for free. They would need two containers, one at the very east end of Camp Ravenna, and then one at the main gate.
Do we do it free for the city of Kent, Kent State University?
Well, we do, we do for the county. We, in our bid, we, the bid we just did, we did for the city buildings, we do it for free. As we're renewing contracts, we're doing it free for the government buildings.
Nonprofit.
In nonprofit. And they kind of fall in that area right there.
I would, since this is a new proposal, I would like to suggest that we put it on for discussion in another meeting.
Okay.
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 Is that all right with you?
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And we'll have a chance to give us some thought.
Sure, sure, that's fine. I have one more discussion item. If you've noticed that I once again have a sellout crowd here for the solid waste district meeting. We, as you know, that we have been working very diligently, the team, on the contract between Rarick and the county, or the district, for the purchase of four trucks and 25,000 carts. Late yesterday, we got a signed contract from their side. I don't know who was doing more cartwheels in this room. But we'll leave that for discussion later. But, we do have the copies of the contract here. Tim is here. I brought Joanne, asked Joanne and Todd to attend as well. I hope you had a chance to look over some of that. But, I would like to take action on this, if you're comfortable with it. We have looked it over, we're happy, we got in at what we wanted. And again, each day, my trucks are getting older. And in my world, I live in the world of three, so if I have one truck engine blow, I'm holding my breath that it doesn't become contagious.
You're in the world of two, right?
Yes, yes.
Todd, are you comfortable with this?
Financially, I mean, to convert to single stream, we're getting zero percent over seven years.
Joanne?
Yes. I think we met the, the good requirements that we were asked to do.
Could we get your comment on this one?
Absolutely. As you are well aware, I believe there was an attorney general's opinion that we asked for and received. We received that back in June, and based on the attorney general's opinion, I don't believe it's in the county's best interest to move forward with this.
From my perspective, whenever we have a contract that we're signing, that I like to have it in advance, at least a few hours, so I have a chance to look at it. Our legal counsel is suggesting that he's uncomfortable. So what we'd like to do is maybe have a chance to hear more from you as to what the issues are exactly. And then, have a chance to discuss it among ourselves. But, could you tell us, do you want to do it, it's a negotiation, I think we have to do this in a public meeting?
Yes, I believe you are correct. I think it would be improper to go to executive session.
Right, can you tell us exactly, like, we have this written document, can you tell us exactly what part of it is of concern?
Absolutely. When I looked at this document, I looked at a couple of sections. The first section that was...
Could I interrupt just for one moment? This looks like it's an official document with a signature, is this a photocopy of the signature?
It was an electronic signature.
Oh, can we write on our copy there? Okay, because I needed to take notes on it. Is it okay to write on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not going to do this.
I can point you to a specific section, 12.02, the rule that is on page 10.
On page 10. These pages are not numbered. Oh, yes, they are. It's towards the back. It's like the second page from the back. Okay, now, what is the article number?
It's Article 12, it's Section 12.02. Rule B on page 10.
Okay, so nine and 10. Okay. It's for remedies of default?
Yes, and my interpretation of that particular section is that would give Closed Loop the legal right to pursue the county in the event of that, of default, or in the event that we need to get out of the contract. I believe that section would let Closed Loop not only take the trucks back, take the containers back, but pursue the county legally for any unpaid payments under this agreement. When I spoke to Closed Loop about this yesterday, I asked them to take that provision out. They were not willing to do so. I explained my position at that point as, if that is the case, if, if the county would be on the hook and obligated to make those remaining payments, that that did not feel like a lease, it did not operate as a lease might normally work. And he explained to me, we do not want to be in a position where, you know, we could lose these trucks, have to take them back, and then resell them at a loss. I said, are we talking a purchase or a lease here? And I said, that's a question in my mind at least, what, what are we really dealing with here? And I think as one looks at this agreement, the, the language on the face of the document reads it's a lease. It's labeled at the top as a lease, but it does not appear to be working as a lease, in my opinion. It appears to be operating more, if you will, as a promissory note. That's borrowing. That's expressly what the AG's opinion advised us about in the very first section of their decision.
And said we could not, right?
That is correct. And I understand that what the commissioners do is, one thing, our office's position is, we find AG opinions persuasive. We find them of value in court, and that's why we, as an office, follow them. What the policy decision is that you make is understandably a different matter. That's, that's one concern.
So you're saying the AG opinion said this, this isn't a good idea?
This, in my opinion, I do not believe it's in the county's best interest. And I brought a copy of the AG's opinion with me, I can leave that with the office.
Yeah, we need to have a copy. Also, if, could we, could this be done as a lease purchase?
I think that's what is ostensibly, yeah, I think that's how it's...
That's how we bid it, the document, it was a lease purchase.
Could the prosecutor's office maybe give us a clarification, how this lease differs from the one we did with the sheriff, which was also a lease purchase, and which also indicated that if we failed to make payments, it was all come due? Just because we have done lease purchases, and in the example of the sheriff cars, as soon as we modified the equipment, we were unable to return those vehicles per lease.
And I'm not familiar with that agreement, I want to say one thing. I asked for a provision in this contract with Closed Loop that would basically limit our liability to the fact, if, if we had to get out of the contract, if there was a default, that they would simply take the trucks and the containers back. They were not willing to put that in, and the explanation came back to me again, essentially, you know, they don't want to take a loss on the remaining payments. So, I understand that from a business perspective, I get it. But from a legal perspective, I, I think it's a very, very close call on this.
Now, could I repeat what I think you said to us in terms of the liability, and make sure that we have it correct? What they have in here as a provision is that if we default, we pay a certain amount each month, and then we default, say for a month or two. But what they want us to do is, they not only take back the carts and the truck, but they want us to continue paying for the whole remainder of the time?
That is my understanding, and I think that they could pursue that option based on how the contract's written. And that's why I asked in the conversation I had yesterday to take that one provision out.
Okay.
I did not want to put the county in a position of having to...
Now, could we make a proposal to them with different language that would still offer protection to them? Because you certainly understand, they don't want to take a big loss. Could we write a substitute remedy on default that would protect them, but also protect us?
We keep the equipment, but we have to pay out or something of that sort.
Well, yeah, if we could, if we could come up with substitute language that offers them the protection they need, but also doesn't put us in such financial jeopardy.
I don't know, I don't know that that changes the nature, that I think this is essentially a purchase.
You know, I would think any contract that the business would want to protect themselves is, if we default, I mean, what, they would have some...
Right, but the problem with this particular language, if I understand it, is that they're more than protecting themselves. They're, they're protecting themselves, but then they're taking all the rest of the payments, or wanting us to continue to pay for the whole thing. Still, they have the trucks and the carts. Am I understanding it correctly?
I think they could do that. I think they have an argument in front of a court, in front of a judge, based on the language it's in.
So, not only would we end up paying for the whole thing, but we would have the trucks and the carts. We wouldn't have them. So I'm thinking there must, first of all, this is supposed to be a lease purchase, and I think all lease purchases, like if you lease a car, they consider you the owner, you know, for any kind of damage or whatever. So in a lease purchase arrangement, we're really purchasing it, but we're doing it through lease payments. It's kind of a, I don't know, the legal language. But, what we need to do is make sure they're protected, because they, of course, have to be protected. But we want to do it in such a way that they don't get more than necessary to be protected. And it sounds to me like the problem with this language is that they're more, they're getting, they're protected, but they're getting more than what is necessary. So, can we craft language that we think protects us, still protects them, and run it by them and see if they can agree to that?
We can try.
Okay.
I can tell you that this position was, basically, the language coming out was non-negotiable. It was a very hard and fast position on their part. We can certainly try anything. But in my mind, it doesn't change the nature with respect to the AG's opinion at this point.
Right, well, we, we're not questioning the AG's opinion. We're not questioning them. What we would like to do, we do, we are allowed to do lease purchases. But we want to do, change this language in such a way that they're protected, but also that we're not in that much financial jeopardy. I would think, they have trucks, all constructed?
They have our trucks.
They have four trucks.
They have our trucks. They have all these carts. They don't want them, they want us to buy them. We need them, we want to buy them. So, there's real incentive on the part of all parties to come to terms and to negotiate this one section. Were there any other sections that you had concerns about?
Not within the face of the document.
Okay, but did you have others?
Frankly, yes. The second concern was, I believe, the fact that this went out on a public bid. I think it was agreed to fairly early on in this process, that once a contract was decided and awarded, that it would be subsequently and immediately turned around and assigned to Closed Loop. That's a matter of concern, at least to me, because it implies there was some information sharing that was going on between and among the parties.
Say that last sentence again.
As far as the...
Well, once the contract was awarded, there was a side agreement between the private companies?
I don't know if, if it was at the time of the agreement. I'm not clear on the timing, but I can tell you there had to have been surely information sharing between and among the parties to have reached the endpoint decision that this would be assigned to, from the initial bidee or winner of the bid, to somebody after that named Close Loop. That's a matter of concern to me.
Ken, you, you said why, could you tell us why that's a concern?
It was a matter open for a public bid. And to the extent that there might have been information shared with certain parties and not other parties applying for the bid, that would be a matter of concern.
I see what you're saying. Well, do we know that that occurred, or are we assuming?
I do not know for sure. I can tell you, our office was involved in this process up until the time, I believe, that we received the attorney general's opinion in June. I was re-involved in this process by the phone call of the attorney for Bell Pacific, Bell Equipment, when he threatened the county with a million and a half dollar lawsuit. That's when I became re-involved in this process.
The Bell, was that related to this contract, the Bell?
It is, in a sense, they made the trucks. I understand they made the trucks. And they wanted payment for the trucks, and the attorney made that clear to me, you know, on certain terms, he wanted...
I'm not familiar with that issue. Could you tell us once again, or explain a little bit more, what exactly happened, that Bell would sue, or threaten to sue?
Yeah, and I believe Denise Smith may have addressed this a little bit last time, but...
Now, since this is a litigation, do we need to be in the exec session?
I can basically keep it general enough, and I'm not going to get into specifics. But basically, there was, the concern expressed to me that they had not been paid for the trucks, and wanted paid for the trucks. And that led to the question of where, where is the county on getting the money?
Okay.
So, at that point, I believe, if, if my recollection of time serves me correctly, it was shortly after that call I got from that attorney, that Denise and I, Denise Smith and I came over here for that board meeting. And that would be my, that would be my second concern. As, as it relates to the process this went through to get it to the endpoint of where we are.
Okay, I'm going to repeat, you have two concerns. The first one has to do with the Section 12.02 concerning remedies on default. The way they have worded the language allows them, if we default, which we're not planning to do, but if, if we did default, what would happen is that not only would they take the trucks and the carts back, but they also would demand payment for the entire amount.
And that was made clear to me, and no uncertain terms in the phone call with Mr. Lapp yesterday.
Okay, I just want for the record to be sure we understand the concern.
I, I merely proffer in my opinion that that is the section I think that they would argue with under. And that's why I asked Mr. Lapp two, maybe three times, if they could remove that section.
Okay. But we, we necessarily, they've got to have some kind of a wording. They need a wording for remedies on default. I can understand why they wouldn't want to remove it. But certainly, maybe they could reword it in such a way that they're protected, but we also are not taking on too much liability. So if we could work maybe towards that. The second issue has to do with the fact that you believe that it could be presumed that when the public bid was given, that information was given to some of the bidders, but not to all.
I, I don't know, I don't have evidence of that, I suspect it. Because I don't understand how one could go through the process and, I don't know what information was shared.
Okay, all right. And we, we do need a copy of the attorney general's opinion.
He's got that one.
Yeah. So my suggestion, if you agree, is that we put this on hold for just enough time for us to try to digest what we've just heard. Read the attorney general's opinion. Ask you if you could come up with, or help us to come up with alternative language that would offer the company the protection they need, but also not have it be so much liability, because it's not fair. Say, for instance, we paid for, it's seven years, right? Say we paid for five years, and then for some reason we went into default, and missed two or three months, whatever it is. Then they not only would take the trucks and the carts, but they would demand complete payment for the whole thing.
They could...
That's the way you're saying this reads. So we want to have it read in such a way that it's more reasonable. And it's possible that if we come, they can, they, I can understand why they say they wouldn't take it out. But they might be willing to approve a different language.
This is the language that we agreed to yesterday with them, is that correct?
On the phone, when Mr. Lapp and I parted company on the phone, it was clear he had his position on that clause, and I had mine.
It looks like he signed it.
I did not confer any agreement on that section on the phone with him. I explained it was, it was an issue.
It looks like, is, the thing that he signed, is that the agreement itself?
That is the agreement itself.
And he signed the agreement?
That was, that was a...
Where he got the terms he wanted, he's going to sign the agreement.
I see, what you're saying is that we shouldn't be signing it.
I'm simply telling the county, I don't believe it's in the best interest. And I'm, I'm telling the county that because of the AG's opinion.
So, I guess, I guess basically, I guess my question is, because now I'm confused, if the prosecutor's office is saying, based upon the AG's opinion, not to do this at all, is that correct?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying where our office's position is based on the AG's opinion, what the body does as a matter of policy is a different issue. And I don't have to say over...
Because I don't think that was the issue. Let me, let me figure this out, because the prosecutor's office is not objecting to us doing a lease purchase, certainly. Because we've done that many times before.
Well, it was Denise who said we needed to put a bid together to do a lease, after everything came about. And that's what we did, to put the bid together for a lease purchase.
Right. And so, the, the document that we have in hand, that they like and signed, is one that you're advising us not to sign because of that one provision that's in there that gives them, it makes us have more liability than is reasonable.
And I want to be clear, it's not just a matter of that liability, but that term in and of itself, and the fact that they can pursue it, makes this more, look like more of a purchase agreement than an actual lease purchase.
But aren't all lease purchase agreements purchases?
So, that's a concern.
I think all the lease, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I know when you lease a car, it's like you own it. I mean, it's really a purchase.
And then they take it back if you don't pay. Makes sense.
The agent's opinion does even indicate within it that there's, it's weird that the state doesn't allow you to go to debt, but it does allow for lease purchases, and they weren't sure the difference, but they do specifically allow for lease purchase. We could look at the sheriff's cars and see what language on default was in that.
Okay. And we need a copy of the, we have not seen the attorney general's, have we?
No.
Yeah, it came, it came...
Yeah, it came last year.
Came to us?
Like July.
Yeah, it's been so long. Did you, did you suggest to them other language, or did you just say, remove that clause?
I asked to remove the clause, I did not suggest other language.
I can understand, like Kathleen said, that they do need some kind of remedy, I mean...
Well, can you, do you think you could help us draft language that would be protective?
We can try it, certainly. I have stuff to look into.
Either compensation for vehicles or full payment, but not both, would be my...
Okay. But could we just take a little time out and do that, give us time? We'll read the attorney general's opinion. I don't ever remember reading, but when I see it, I probably say, oh yeah, I read this.
There's another reading goes on here.
Yeah. So, and then what we'll do is just hold on to this until we have some more information.
And if I could direct the commissioners on one part of that, it'll owe you very early in the decision where they talked about the prohibition against borrowing related to private entities and public entities. And that's the concern that's driving where I'm coming from.
Well, that's why, that's why, that's why we had this provision where we put it out for public bid. So, so we, we solved that problem, right?
This was by putting it out for public?
We put it out for public bid.
It was put out for public?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm missing maybe your, as a lease, it was titled a lease, it uses a language of a lease, is it functioning as a lease?
Well, actually, it's a lease purchase.
It's a close call. And I think if this were in front of a judge, a judge would have to look at it very closely. And it would take some deliberation from the judge to ultimately decide where, where this is, where this paper comes down on that side of the law.
Okay, so we need some time, and if you would help us in trying to craft the right language... language so that we're protected, and also the vendor's protected, and if you could come up with some past lease purchases that we have, that might be very helpful.
We have the radio one, we have the vehicles for the sheriff.
I know we've done several, and I know...
We'll have to get those out.
The district has, has vehicles in its fleet that were purchased before I got there, lease purchase.
So, I think we're okay now, so this is where we are. We'll hold it until we get more information.
Okay.
Did you have other things?
Personnel resignations.
All right, we need an executive session.
I'm going to go into the executive session, personnel resignation.
Okay, I second the motion, we'll have a roll call.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Is there action?
Yes. We are accepting the resignation of Cindy Gray from the solid waste management district, and we are going to post, authorize the posting of that job.
Bill's going to bring the paperwork back, you can bring it, so...
Two journal entries.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on your journal entries, or?
Yes, we need to do that. Can you make a motion?
Motion to pass the journal entries.
I second the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion to adjourn.
Do you want to adjourn?
We want to recess, right?
Just recess.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Is he bringing something back?
Yeah, but it's the things we've already approved, right?
Yes, that's what he's bringing back, but now...
The commercial contracts?
Oh, we're not going to do that today.
Oh, okay.
No, they won't be done today.
I mean, we come back this afternoon, so we're not really adjourning, we're just recessing, right?
Well, no, we're...
I thought we were leaving solid waste open, because you guys are going to look at a contract, and then you're going to come back later.
We're not, that contract can't possibly be ready today. The only thing that might, that we might want to hold open is the price increase, but we could do that.
So, the DA one?
What?
DA one, for sale? I thought that's what you guys were holding for. Commercial contract, B?
B.
Well, discussion A...
I don't have anything like DA one on here.
Discussion A one, commercial contract?
Oh, we're not going to be able to do that.
We're not, that won't be done today, no. The only thing that may come back, it would be a price increase for the commercial, but he didn't have the information he was going to send in. So, we can go into recess now, we'll recess, and then if it comes back, we can, yeah, okay. So, then...
So, we need to get them on the phone, then?
Well, just, he's going to send it.
No, I mean this...
Commercial thing?
PSAP operations, his phone call.
Oh, yeah, let's get on the phone.
So, do you want to go back in regular session and recess for the phone call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we're back, we're back in county commissioners meeting, and we will recess to go to, well, do we do it on, on the tape, or just?
I think you just wanted to hear it, right? So, quite often...
Yeah, yeah. So, we want to listen in on the subcommittee meeting in Columbus for the Esonet PSAP conference.
to see if he was interested, and he said he could be. He said he'd need to know some things first about how much rent we could pay, kind of, you know, they can pay, correct? And then what the value of the building is at this point, an appraisal kind of thing, what it would be worth. But he said he might be interested, depending if it's, if it was a workable solution for him to take it on.
That was for the sale, but we also have another question, is there's an empty office space in that building?
Down in the basement, yes.
Yeah, we wanted you to rent it, I mean, you know, advertise it.
Put it out for, okay, we can do that.
Because even if someone buys it, they'll still want...
Rental, sure, yeah, yeah, okay. Oops. I'm sorry, it was such a big agenda for today, but there was a lot of requis, a lot of resolutions.
Yeah, the privilege of reading these.
Yes. Now, should I go through and look at each one, or can I just read from here?
You have to read from here.
Yeah. Motion to accept the bids and award the contract for the Margador Road Sewer Improvements within Brentville Township for Water Resources.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the bids and award contract for the Brentville Water Treatment Plant Clear Well Replacement Project for Water Resources.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to authorize the preparation of plans, specifications, and estimated costs for the Streetsboro Wastewater Treatment Plant Return Activated Sludge Val Replacement and Actuator Upgrade Project for Water Resources.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
That was a mouth favor, wasn't it?
Aye.
Motion to reject the bids received for providing emergency and specialized services for the Portage County Water Resources Department.
I second, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve specifications and set the bid date for providing emergency and specialized services for the Portage County Water Resources Department.
We're going to rebid, is what that is.
Yeah. Okay, does, does the, does, do we need to say rebid in the motion?
Um, I can, if you, we can put it in there if you want, but it's, we're redoing the whole specifications over again, because, yeah.
Okay, then we don't need it in there, yes. I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to authorize the reduction of load limits thirty-five percent on all county and township roads in Portage County affected 130, 116, or as soon thereafter as signs are posted for the county engineer.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to authorize the use of force account and the issuance of highway permits for the Portage County Engineer for 2016.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to accept contract change order number one, and final, for the Prospect Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Project in Rivanna and Ridestown Townships for the County Engineer.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to accept contract change order number one, and final, for the Summit Road Resurfacing Project in Rivanna and Franklin Townships for the County Engineer.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to enter into amendment number two for parenting services with family and community services for JFS.
Did we skip number ten?
Number ten.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Motion to enter into amendment number two for child and adult emergency reporting services with Coleman Professional Services for JFS.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Enter into amendment number two for parenting services with family and community services for JFS.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to enter into amendment number two for domestic violence services with family and community services for JFS.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to enter into amendment number one for interpreting services with the International Institute of Akron for JFS.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to enter into an educational affiliation agreement with Bowling Green State University for Portage, Columbiana County WIC.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to enter into an educational affiliation agreement with Ohio Valley College of Technology for Portage, Columbiana County WIC.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to enter into an agreement for backup building official, backup master plan examiner, and backup presidential building official services with Theodore G. Manfres Architect and Planner, Chief of the Building Department.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to enter into an agreement between the Board of Commissioners, Portage County Prosecutor, Portage County Sheriff, and Family and Community Services for Safer Future Services.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to enter into a real estate lease agreement for the property located at 211 South Chestnut Street, Rivanna, Ohio, with Anthony Sylvester doing business as Sly Bill Bonds.
I second the motion, it's a discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to declare the necessity to purchase one vehicle for use by the Portage County Prosecutor.
I second the motion, it's a discussion.
Is this a vehicle just for anybody to use in that office, is that what it says?
Yes, he, from what I gathered, he's replacing one of his oldest ones, giving that back to the motor pool for reuse, or whatever, and he is paying for it from his drug forfeiture money.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number twenty really is the WIC letter that was attached about security. Evidently, it was referred to you, said to add to your meeting agenda, did you have that?
My agenda was already done before I got that, so I will look at that, when I go back.
So, you'll bring it back?
Yeah, I will bring it back.
I did have a question about...
Sure.
Renting property, did we ever rent the...
Bar 10?
Yeah.
Not yet. It's been looked at several different times, but nobody's picked up on it. This is the, the one that we have in here, is the small one that's right beside, so at least we've got that going. If we could rent the bar 10 out to someone...
Is there a sign that can be seen from the street?
They did fix one to the building in the front, yes, so you can see it, yeah, no.
I didn't, I, when I looked at it last time, I didn't see it, but I haven't looked like these.
Yeah.
Just curious, is there anything further?
Undiscussion.
Okay.
The attached MOU with the supplemental human resources services agreement between yourselves and the prosecutor, I, when I got it, I just wanted to point out that, I circled it on the actual thing.
Yes, I saw that.
It says assistance and vice in the administration of county workers' compensation claims. Denise, part of Denise's salary already comes out of workers' compensation for that particular piece.
So, she already does.
So, I don't, didn't want to, I wanted to just call it to your attention while you're doing the negotiations on this, so that we should probably take it out, or is it part of the sixty-five? You see what I'm saying?
No, we should take it out, since she's already being paid for that.
That's what I thought, too, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Can you give your comment, too, so she can include it in the, when it comes forward?
Absolutely, when you talk to it, sure, okay. I have blue sheets that have some movement on them for you today. Uh, let's see, the first one is Kent County Court, concrete. We did authorize to go ahead and issue the work for the ceiling. It has yet to be done, because I emailed them today, and I said, I'm not hearing anything about it being done, and they were still waiting for the product. So, hopefully, it will get here before we dip way under the temperatures where we cannot, it won't be feasible to do. The next is Hills Pond Dam. We got some preliminary results that can, do confirm that the spillway does not meet any of the ODNR requirements for safely discharging of water. Our consultants came up with three alternatives, and I've listed them there. And at this point, for what I'm saying, the next step is, is that while they've listed what are three potential fixes, we don't have any pricing on what those are, and for you to make a decision on how to move, so what I would like permission from you to do is to contact them and say, fix the cost of these, and then come in and make the presentation to the board on all three, so that you hear all of the information and can make a decision on what you want to do. Does that sound feasible?
Yeah, can we make that a journal entry?
Yes. Okay, great. Next one is the Coroner's Building. Todd and I tried very hard to get some money appropriated at the end of the year to buy the furniture, but we ran into a little bit of a snag with the auditor's office not wanting us to do it at the end of the year. So, I told him, and I think when we were talking this morning before Solid Waste started, I think he's got money in the budget, so we just now need to get the furniture, because everything else is done, except for the roof, which is going to happen in the spring. But my understanding, and I haven't been over there to look at everything yet, but it's, I guess it looks pretty sharp.
The porch and steps, it's exciting. So, you don't need any action from us?
No, I just wanted to give you an update as to where we were.
Okay.
And then, the last piece is the Board of Elections Office space. I met and walked through with the architect, as, as well as face. For them to be able to function for the presidential election, all of any kind of work that we are going to do, or potentially do, would have to be done by September first. We have a couple of options.
That is March primary, what is it?
Well, the March primary, I don't think there's probably almost anything that could be done too much.
Oh, no, I know that, I'm just saying, are they just going to be as is for the March primaries?
Well, see, it all depends on what way we want to move here. There's two options. Do we take them out, totally out of their space that they have now, so that the area can be completely gutted in one fell swoop and configured for what they actually have to have? Or are we going to leave them where they're at, and then just do something in room 111 over, across the hall, that will give them some breathing space?
Now, if we decided to move them out, could we do it after the March and still be done by September?
That piece, um, that piece I would want to go back to the architect and think about, because we talked about, if we move them totally out so that we can get ready for September, we probably have to have two construction shifts working, you know, day and evening, or afternoons, or whatever, to get it all done by that point. But knowing that we still have to do bids for that construction, we just can't call anybody, and we're going to have to do bids, and that's going to take a little while to do, so perhaps they couldn't even move out through March. I mean, it wouldn't have to necessarily move out, but I would need to check with him on dates.
Yeah, and then the second thing is, what is the difference in cost between those two options?
We didn't put any figures to those yet, he didn't look at that yet, because one is going to be, well, I guess it goes back to, how do we want to do the project? Do we want to completely renovate that area so that it is what they need to have, or do we simply want to do a short fix? Because eventually, they're still going to need to have all that stuff redone, because it's, the space is all chopped up and is not in the, in the right kind of usable stuff. In my mind, for me, it makes sense to try to just move them out and bite the bullet, but there's funding that has to be looked at in the whole nine yards.
The thing that's so important is that we'd like to do it right and do it once.
That's what I think, too.
That would be our preference. However, if they cannot stay there till March elections over, move out completely, have it ready then for September first, then we don't have an option to do that. We'd have to do a temporary fix with 111, and then later, maybe, you know, reconfigure, which would be probably a duplication of some expenses.
I think it depends on what are they able to do, time-wise, funding-wise, are we able to do it together for them to move out?
Well, I think, in talking with Eric that was here, I, I think he feels it's doable, but also at what cost? Because if you have to run two shifts, there's, there's more money that puts that together.
Well, it shouldn't cost more, because...
It takes so many hours to do it, no matter when you're working.
That's right, you, the thing is going to cost...
Or it would have been longer.
Unless they have to pay overtime or something, that would cost more.
Two shifts, I wouldn't think they would.
I wouldn't think they would. It shouldn't cost more.
I, I, you know...
But anyway...
It's a premium, I know it is. I mean, it's either, either the project is twelve months, or it's six months double.
Should we schedule a meeting as soon as possible and have election board people here, and the election people, and the architect?
To find out what you want of this...
People.
Yeah, and when I put down next step, one of the things I would want to know, or thought about was, you know, we were pretty lucky when we did phase two of the courthouse, because we had where the prosecutor's office is now, that was an open building for us. And as we had to redo departments, we moved them over there, redid and then moved them back. Well, then after the prosecutor moved up there, we lost kind of that, you know, ability to do so. I didn't know if you wanted me to put some inquiries out with a couple of realtors in town to see if there is, or what it would cost if we had to totally move them out of this building, let's say to the old Eliet Building. What we could lease that for, for six or seven months or eight months during, you know, to kind of give you some, something there, as well as would, and I don't think this is something that the Election Board would probably want, but to try to retrofit them or find spaces within our building here for them. You know, we don't, doesn't seem like we have open spaces really that we could just take them and plunk them somewhere else.
So if you could follow up, what would it cost for leasing a building for temporary life?
And then get a meeting set up for everybody.
As soon as possible because we really don't have any time.
Exactly. He thought, well, I don't know about the March, but, and I think, well, yeah, I, it would take at least a month for the bidding process, so, you know, we're right there up against it. And if I was Faith and Terry, I would say, "Let us stay put here." You know, and then as soon as the primaries over, yeah, then, you know, then we can move and do the whole nine yards.
It can be done in five months.
Yeah, I'll get that for you.
Okay, and then another question, were you finished with the WIC?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, another question that came up that we were discussing. Janet came in the other day and indicated that one of her, I thought it sounded like maybe a feasible suggestion, is to look at the WIC program and ask ourselves, is there another place where they could go that would be convenient? And then use that whole space for any of the public meetings that we need. So, did you hear the tape of what she was saying?
I didn't, well, she was in my office before she came back to see you. Because she wondered if I knew that there was a suggestion of moving the public meeting room to the sixth floor or a training, training room to the sixth floor for job and family people. And I said, "I had not heard that." And I think it was an idea that Todd had talked with Brian and HR maybe about that if Job and Family Services needed training room, because that's what they kind of used 111 for, maybe it should be in that empty space that's up there.
She's worried because I think they would like to take over that part, but we don't want anymore. Because that's just storage of stuff.
And I even said that, you know, when we walked through the second and the third floors of all the areas that Job and Family inhabits, they have several training rooms spread apart. And I think they just need to figure out a way to have their people trained within their own areas.
And you know, Joanne, we've said before, it's just best utilization of space. Because, you know, we do have some space.
You're right, yeah.
Right, that's what I said.
What about having an architect look at that, those two floors and trying to figure out if they could move some offices from here, down here, and then open up that whole big area and have a nice big training room? That would be the best solution.
Well, and to your other point though, that you were asking about the WIC area. Now, we were just getting ready to move the nightly visitation folks over there from Job and Family Services to get them out of this building and running through. And we have, I think it's on tap for next week to have that be done for them to start using that particular spot. Now, they will be giving up spaces on the first floor where those were, which those may, those rooms are big, and those rooms could be used in case we would have some kind of an overflow, you know, need a public meeting room, I would say.
No, I'm thinking her, her big point that I really agree with is it would be nice to have a public meeting room where someone doesn't have access to the whole building. You know, because if we go to the first floor as a public meeting room, there's elevators, you can just go anywhere, anybody could just be anywhere.
Well, and I, I guess maybe the other side of the coin is though too, how many meetings would we have with the public that would be at night that you would be worried about that?
See, I don't know.
See, you know, we don't have that many.
I don't think either.
Most of the times, yeah, most of the time they're during the daytime when there's plenty of people here.
We could probably lease the building somewhere just if it's, or go to a church.
Sort of like Maplewood.
Why is such a big concern?
Well, because it's protecting territory, I think.
It was because the suggestion was to move IT to a different floor.
Okay.
And that's, that's what got it all.
And then also you're going to make a public room where the storage of all the IT equipment is.
Yeah, so, all right, then I have just the need for a very short executive session. Personnel resignation and hiring.
I move going to executive session for personnel resignation and hiring.
I'll second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Your action?
Yes, we're accepting the resignation of Robert Bonella, and we're posting the position of maintenance one.
I'll get you copies of all of these, Amy, for your records. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment today that we know of?
So far, no one's coming on. So we could go to the discussion items that we have. Will you help, please add to your agenda too?
Yes.
On the first one, this is a settlement agreement. And I had some questions. I tried to reach Denise, but she's not here today. And I tried to reach another attorney in the prosecutor's office and they weren't there. So let me tell you what my concern is.
Is this D1 we're talking about?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. No, is that our, please add to your agenda.
Oh, let me get that back to you.
My concern was that it's, this person was hired by Wooster and worked there many years and left. When they left, they were given a third of, or a certain amount of money to, for sick leave. And then when they came to us, we hired them.
And carried over this.
And they carried over the wrong amount. So this is an agreement to make up for that and it's, it's very reasonable to do that. The only question I have is that whereas an employee was rehired by Portage County, and I'm worried about the word rehire because we didn't rehire someone that was a Portage County employee.
No, he was in that, the Wooster.
We hired him. So I just wanted to be sure that was the right language. And it may be the right language because they call, for O-P-E-R-S purposes, they call anyone who has retired and then takes another job as a rehired employee. So my question had to do with the word, it's only in there three or four times. So I'm wondering if we couldn't do a journal entry of approval who's subject to answering the question, having the prosecutor approve that language.
So is this the rehire? I have a resolution, I drafted a resolution for you, actually.
Yeah, we have it, I think.
I didn't give it to you.
Oh.
So we would have to, is it a separation agreement? Or is he, he's not leaving?
No, no.
This is wrong, so, right. So my question to Denise yesterday was, is it a separation agreement? And she said, "The board can change it any way you like."
No, no. It's not.
So it's on your agreement too, you say that, it's in the title.
Yeah, it's not, and.
So it's not come out.
So the other thing that I had a question about, I think you weren't in the room, but in the agreement itself, it says, well, this employee worked for Wooster and he quit, retired for Wooster, then he was hired by Portage County. The language says that the employee was rehired with the Portage County Board. We didn't rehire, we hired.
Okay, so the court.
Now, it could be because any person who retires then is, if he goes back to work, he's rehired. So it may be the right way, but if it isn't, I'd like to have it taken out. So we could check that.
I will do that.
And then.
It's in the title, you see the title?
Yeah, why do we use the word separation? Is there another word we could use?
A settlement? I think that.
I think settlement would be good.
And I would change the resolution as well to settlement.
Yeah, and then if you, we could do a passage of this resolution, subject to those two things, as Denise approves them. I mean, whatever she says would stand with me, is that?
Right.
Okay. So do you want to make the motion?
Uh, yes, I've moved to approve the settlement agreement at release for Donald Maccas.
Subject to Denise's approval of the two questions.
Rehire, retire, and also the word separation versus settlement.
Okay, okay. I'll second the motion, is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In fact, on the add to the agenda you've got regarding settlement.
Because I talked to her yesterday, and she said, "Either way the board wants to go, she's, she's okay." I have the word document, so I can change that.
Okay, so settlement is good for there.
She's okay with settlement.
It's just that one issue. Okay. Number two on the, please add to your agenda from Ryan Chappell Ford regarding the request. This is really exciting because it's our mission to educate students about safety and hazards. And so the university is going to carry on some of it, so it'd be great for us to support.
You know, I thought this was very good, but I just wanted to question his willingness to serve on the grant advisory board, is that going to be a lot of time?
Well, you said they're only going to meet once or twice a year.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think it'd be, it'd be good for him to be there anyway. So if there's no objection, we'll do a journal entry of approval for the letter.
And I'll work with Ryan to get that letter because I think she needs it by, by Monday.
Okay. Okay, and then on the third one.
Oh, yeah, this is a real sticky WIC that signals on news tax oversight committee.
Do you know, the question that we have to answer, is this a subcommittee or is it just a committee? Citizens Committee, and we don't want it to be a subcommittee.
Well, she said because we appointed the members though, that it is a subcommittee.
Well, we appoint members to a lot of things that were, that are not subcommittees.
Maybe I misunderstood what she said. No, you created it and appointed, is what I read too. That's why it becomes, just have the transportation improvement district.
Didn't we create a committee to over, have oversight of snakes and?
The dwarf?
Yeah, yeah.
No, that was a state, the state created that committee by ORC.
The state committee, and then we appointed to it.
We appointed to it, that's right.
Because I don't want it to be a subcommittee.
See, I don't want it either, but I don't know how to get around it.
I don't know, maybe we should hold this until she's here so we can talk about it. I mean, with, just because we appoint them and we decide we want a citizens committee, doesn't seem to me it should be a subcommittee.
Well, I think she's just saying we have ownership in it because we created it and appointed the people, so we've had all to say.
We did, and we, we had a jail, jail committee looking at.
And did you create and appoint to that also?
We, we created a committee and we appointed to it and.
Was that a subcommittee then?
Well, I didn't think it was a subcommittee, we didn't.
We didn't ask that question. Okay, so if you start at the top, the Investment Advisory Committee, I think Brad's going to bring that back to you during your first meeting. You'll do your organizational things there, so that one's pretty much done. The Solid Waste Management District, I don't.
Could you start this for a minute? On this one with Denise, we're just going to schedule it once she's here.
Yes, yes.
Now, where are you doing?
I'm at the, I'm at the three, number three, on please add to the agenda.
Okay.
But at the first paragraph, where she talks about the four questions that you have. So the first one's investment advisory, and Brad Cromas is going to bring that back to you as, as a committee to decide how you want to move forward with your rules and all those sorts of things. Solid Waste, I don't think that you need to organize on Monday unless you want to, but ask Bill to maybe bring back the resolution to create your rules for that board as to how you're advertising and setting the day. It will be weekly on Thursday at nine o'clock is your new start time. So if he brings those two resolutions to you next week, that would work. Because that's what she's saying in here, is you need rules. Okay? Then the Joint Board, you're done. The JDC, you did that in December. You did your rules, you appointed, you did your organizational meeting ends of December. Sales and News Tax, you're going to bring back for Denise. And the transportation improvement district, I know that you've been copied on emails that Mickey is advertising, they're taking minutes, so you think they need to establish rules too? Shall we send this email to them?
Are they a subcommittee? They're going to have bylaws.
Right, so they're good.
We didn't create them, right?
Yes, well, the state did.
The state.
Would you?
So they're not a subcommittee then, are they? No.
I don't think so. But I know that they're working on, they're working on bylaws.
And we're not even on the committee or anything.
No, so you're, you're good with all four of these then, right?
Yeah. Okay, and. We'll go then to our resolutions.
Okay, motion to approve the Thursday, January seventh, two thousand sixteen bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion, we have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, January seventh, two thousand sixteen journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion, we have a roll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Our motion to accept the donations to the office of the Portage County Dog Warden.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Could you do a motion for then and now, please?
Motion to adopt the then and now.
Use the language on, on number C at the top, near the top.
To approve the January, is it January twelfth the right date?
Seventh.
January seventh, two thousand sixteen then and now certification as presented by the county auditor.
Yes, I'll second the motion. We have a roll call, please.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, we're done with that, now we'll move to discussion.
The first item you talked with Joanne about this morning, I'm not sure if you're ready to move forward or not.
We're not, no.
Bring this back on Denise's agenda next week?
I believe Joanne had a suggestion this morning about removing something in there. If you were to check with her because she's already being paid for, for that service through another vehicle.
I think it was number one in the last bullet point on the first page, Assistant Advice Administration for County Workers' Compensation.
Just remove that piece.
Just remove it, I think. Question two. Number two.
Email from Dave Vaughn.
Yeah.
The bids came in higher than the forty thousand dollars.
I had sent him an email, I didn't copy everybody, but just simply saying, "Do we have money in the account? And if we have money available for that, would they consider splitting it? You know, between the, is the township?
CAC.
Yeah, and, and the county. And I've not heard back, we have money, do we have money?
I asked him the same question, are there funds available? But is that the fund you would use, the CDV GRF?
Yeah.
But I think you might need state permission to do that, I don't know.
So we need more direction before we can answer. Well, does CAC have?
He was copied on this, so he knows. That's David Shay.
If they have the money to pay for it, we'll move forward immediately. If not, we have to get more information.
Aye, it's David Shay, then if he has questions.
Okay. And number three.
This is the Park District request that you transfer or sell them, the water resources property.
They wanted just the one with the billing, there's two parcels they said.
Yeah, there's two parcels Jeff said.
So, so they're just asking for them.
I thought they wanted all of it.
They want both parcels?
The property and the facility.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the options is we, we put a deed restriction that it must be used for public park purposes. And if not, it will revert back to the county. And then when it says it doesn't provide for transfer, but maybe a nominal fee that we like to sell to them for a dollar or something.
A dollar plus cost of the transfer. And then indicate that it, put in the deed restriction, that if they don't continue to use it for park purposes, they have to revert, it comes back to us.
Okay. All right.
And number four.
I don't, you want to hold that for Maureen?
Yeah, well, we did talk about it a little bit this morning, so Joanne will have more information. Number five.
This is signed yesterday?
I thought we did.
We didn't give it to you, but with Denise?
Because I had asked, I wasn't sure.
We signed this document.
This was in our package.
And we did, this was on Tuesday, and we did a journal entry to down that.
Because there's a resolution.
Because I asked about the DAS designee, I wasn't sure if that's what, where we were supposed to sign. And Kathleen said yes because there was a little signy thing there. Did you put it in? I don't think you did. But we did sign that because we talked about.
Let's do it again, just to be honest.
Yeah, there's a resolution, and you see the resolution?
Yeah, I thought we did have a resolution, but if we didn't, we'll do it.
It was held from.
It was held from...
Oh, okay.
You talked about it, but you didn't...
Then we have to do it, because we need to move forward, and Maureen is not going to object, I believe. Okay, do you have the resolution?
Change the resolution, it's, it's on the back of D5, two pages from the back.
Okay, I moved enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, the Portage County Board of Elections, and the Portage County Board of Commissioners.
I'll second the motion, is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number six.
Number six, you'll probably want to hold for Maureen, we'll just bring it back. This is the information from Denise Smith, I, I sent her your rules and how to make all your meetings regular, and this is what she sent back.
Oh, good. I hope this, let me see where you give it. Have you got a chance to read it?
Yeah, it looks, it looks that easy.
Oh, good, okay, that's nice.
One thing different we would call would be an emergency meeting.
Or special.
Oh, I thought we weren't going to have special meetings, they were going to all be regular meetings.
Well, the emergency is a special, special emergency. And then she added some language to your electronic notices only, so it looks like, so we'll just add this into the...
Okay, okay. So on the referred, are there any questions concerning those three items? Are we ready to, I guess we should hold the journal entries till later.
And we don't come back until 1:30?
Should we, should we have the, the security without Denise, without Maureen?
Well, you've got a lot of people coming, you've got all the elected officials in this building, the Board of Elections, that's, it's up to you.
So we should have it and...
You know, I don't know why, but I was thinking two thirty, because I, I made an appointment at one o'clock, I'll try to change it to 12:30, I didn't realize we had this security, I don't know what I was thinking.
You have an appointment at one?
But I, I'll call and see if I can move it to 12:30, so I can be back here at one thirty.
Yeah, okay.
I was thinking we didn't come back till 2:30.
It is 20 to 12.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, did the Department of Budget and Finance would be willing to come now and get that done?
Sure.
Did you make your phone call, do you want to make your phone call about changing your appointment? Why don't you do that? We probably can do the journal entries after Budget and Finance, because I don't think anything is, we're not going to take any action concerning the security, and the other one is the land use thing, so it will be the end of the day then.
Great. We have lunch coming today.
Oh, yeah. Is he willing to come?
Yep.
Oh, that's good.
Hey there, Todd.
Hi there.
Real quick question, 911 funds?
Yes.
Did you press that hundred or 150,000?
Yeah, I was sending along an email.
Oh, did you?
With some of the other things that I know the sheriff was kind of concerned about.
Okay, great.
But there is 150, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And he, they were told that when they were sent the draft budget. Are you ready? There's only discussion items which could turn into journal entries. The first one is the Tricia Marillo, she lives at 3232 Roche, her father is the owner. That's the letter, that's a little unclear. The only other concern I would have is, we've, we've never agreed to a payment plan being where it just goes to taxes. It would beg the question then, why would we ever shut off an owner occupied structure?
Just protect the taxes.
Because they could just write a letter and say, go to my taxes. If that's what the board wants, then, then we could proceed. If it isn't though, then I would have problems doing it for this one. But my, my advice on her is to wait and see if we can get ahold of the father.
To clear it so he understands exactly.
To call it, yeah, we tried looking for numbers yesterday and can't find anything, but I'm going to call Tricia today and see if she'll give me the number.
Yeah, because he's actually the owner that we're dealing with.
Correct, it'd be his taxes that it goes to.
The thing, my concern is too, I mean, I want him to be clear, but we are setting a precedent then, and that can get kind of sticky sometimes.
Well, in his letter, he said he did not want it to go to taxes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And if he's going to have to, I mean, you know...
Well, no, you're right, we need to explain that to him, but what I think, you're right, we need to clarify what it means, but from his letter, the amount that's owed now could go to taxes, is that setting a precedent?
That, that would, we've never done that.
Okay.
And the, the, we do shut off owner occupied structures if they don't pay, the question then could be, why couldn't they just tell us, well, I want it to go to my taxes, in which case we'd never shut off an owner occupied structure, I guess.
And the thing is, in the letter, he said he doesn't want it to go to taxes again, and he can't stop that.
But he can't stop the August one, yeah.
Well, why can't what she owes now, why can't that go to taxes when, when the time comes, when we put everyone who's not paying?
Well, the key is, if we agree to that, then we free her up, so that if she doesn't pay in the July bill, let's say, that bill would also go to taxes.
No, I didn't mean, I don't think I asked what I wanted to ask. Every year, people who have not paid their bills, at a certain point in time, goes to their taxes.
Correct, yes.
What month is that?
August, always August, yeah.
So what you could do, instead of setting a precedent, is just wait till August if it's not paid, but you're saying you have to shut it off in the meantime?
Our policy right now is if you go six months with a previous due balance, we shut you off.
What is your recommendation then concerning?
Well, for this one, for now, I'd at least wait to see what the father, clarify what his thoughts were, and make sure he's comfortable with what he said. If he's comfortable with what is being proposed, and he understands that even in August it could still go, there would still be a question before the board of whether you want people to just say, put it on my taxes, and be freed from shutting off. With owner occupied, they could say that themselves, with renters, we would constantly be asking landlords if they would, you know, do you agree?
And that could be a very time consuming thing.
It could be, so that, that would be the issue before the board, is whether it wants to allow taxes in August to be an out for payment in December.
It sounds like it's probably not a good idea, too.
It would get confusing, it's up to the board though. I mean, the other option is we shut people off, which also has consequences, you know, in terms of their livelihood and etc.
So we'll wait to hear from you before making a decision, right?
Yeah, we'll bring it back next week to get ahold, I'll at least see what her, her father, what his intentions really were, the letter was a little confusing.
And you have to talk to him directly for that.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay.
The second one is the auto spa. They regularly pay at the last minute, she called earlier this week and indicated that they don't have the funds available to pay this time, but that they'll have them within the next 30 days. They offered to pay half, roughly half the balance, they owe 14,800. She's offering to pay 7,000 on Monday, and then the balance within 30 days. Even though they do typically wait to the last minute, they do typically at least make the payment. So that's the payment plan before you for that. That one, your current policy is less than 2,000, so that's why this one's coming to the board, because of the amount of the plan.
Is their bill always that high?
Yeah, they're a car wash.
Okay.
So roughly every three months, they have a $6,000, $7,000 bill.
So it would be reasonable if we do it, like for homeowners, the 2,000 or whatever it is.
Right, yeah.
So is that okay with you, we'll do a journal entry at that one then?
Because essentially, if we shut them off, we're closing the business down.
Yeah.
That is their business, is water. So we'll prove that. We'll need a journal entry then, approving the, the plan on the journal entries. Number three, that we had gotten an Indigent Defense Report that showed a few rejections, and the board had wanted that brought for discussion. We always receive some rejections, historically, we have tried very hard to resubmit and get that money back, sometimes a form was missing or a date wasn't put in. Generally speaking, we've been successful, Pat does a great job of even trying to prescreen that. We used to receive a lot of rejections, she's gotten it down to where there's just a few. Unfortunately, we attached a memorandum that just arrived, I believe, in the last two weeks from the state, saying that they are no longer going to allow resubmissions. So we're still going to resubmit these, because these are from September, that memo was in December.
They will allow them for this year.
Yes. That's what, we're not sure as if they're going to, so we're going to resubmit these, there's a couple, one of them, a form just wasn't signed in the right place. So we'll try that, but I just wanted the board to be aware, we always do try and resubmit, but it is going to get harder and harder.
Next year, we're not going to be able to get any payments for any resubmittals, we're changing the rules.
Right, right.
So whatever we sent in, we have to double check to make sure.
Yeah, well, and sometimes, sometimes we know we're going to get rejected, but we still, you know, the judge orders the payment, so we have to pay the attorney regardless. Oftentimes, even knowing we aren't going to receive it, we still submit it, just to see. There's, there's timelines, number one, often, an attorney will submit something too late, but if the judge signs the order to still pay, we know we're not going to get that reimbursement off of that. There's limits as to how much per type of case, basically a thousand a year is the rough guide, there are certain exceptions to that, but some attorneys go over. There is a form that the judge can turn in, but not all our judges like signing those on a regular basis, so if they authorize, you know, a $600 payment earlier in the year, and then let's say an $800 payment later, that's $200 over the limit, so then we get deemed for that 200.
Can we say to the judges that we're not going to pay anything that doesn't get reimbursed?
Well, there's, we, we haven't, push has not come to shove yet, your policy, for example, on late, is that we won't pay at all. The court document says pay at all. Currently, we have not paid, we've paid the, the 60% that we would normally have to pay anyways, and not paid the other 40. There's fuzzy waters there as to which, which would take over.
Is that what you're telling me?
Well, and the key is, does the judge override, does the judge's order override your policy? That's always been a, a sticky issue that our offices have to negotiate.
Could we forward to all the judges, the letter that we got from the state?
We absolutely can.
With a little, with a, some kind of a cover letter?
Mm-hmm.
Indicating that for next year, we have to be very diligent in terms of time schedule?
We can do that. And then the airport loan, I, I think I brought this up to you, I couldn't remember though, so I put it back on. You know, the, we always send a bill in September, the airport made no contact at all, the last two years, they've requested to do interest, they didn't even make that request this year. The board instructed us to send a reminder, and we sent a reminder asking that it be paid at least by December 10th, and again, that deadline has passed.
And no response.
And we haven't even heard from them, they didn't even say we're not going to pay, there's no check has come, and no, no response. I just wanted the board to be aware of that. You know, we have a loan document, but...
How much is the money?
Forty, well, for this current bill, it's around 45, 43 in principal, around 2,000 or 3,000 in interest, but then they've gone two years without making their principal payment, so they're behind by almost, you know, 130,000 from their schedule.
We have in the past authorized the interest payment only.
You've done that twice, yes.
We've done that twice, but they made a request, so we need to schedule a meeting for them to come in, and then have you here as well, so that they understand if they are expecting us to allow them to extend their loan payment, that they should be paying the interest, and that they need to make the request, we can't operate on their behalf.
And at this point, we've kind of been waiting to see if they were ever going to start making payments, but the agreement has a very specific time schedule, so the agreement will be not, will need modified to add those payments on at the end, you know, that, that we've already waived, I assume this will be a third one that we're leaving.
So if we schedule a meeting with them, then they'll have to address it.
Well, I was wondering, I don't know if he, he usually comes in every quarter or so, or did he cancel it, so, but yeah, we can try.
Maybe that's why he canceled it. So we'll do it that way, and then you'll be there.
Yeah, I just wanted to keep that at the board's attention.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We, we are doing the journal entry for the auto spa payment plan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make a motion to approve the journal?
Uh, yes, I still move.
A second motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So...
The only thing we've got then here is executive session, and then we've got the land bank at NDS at 3:30.
Yeah, and we'll have no journal entries or anything from the executive session. So... We're ready to begin, and I think this is the right one.
No, that's tomorrow.
We got, we got nothing. We can get it right.
Okay, so this meeting is to talk about security, and Maureen isn't here unfortunately because she has the flu. So I think what we can do is to share whatever information we have.
We're going to go into executive session, and so...
Yeah, and, and then we're going to have to maybe meet again, so Maureen is here. So because this involves security, it's something that we can't...
Smile at that.
I know. Thank you.
No, you can have all this security in the world you want. Every person could have a concealed carry.
I'm going to make a motion to come out of executive session.
A second motion, are we on?
Yep.
Okay, we have a roll call?
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Is there action?
No action.
But you're right, you can have all this security, and if somebody's determined to take somebody out, they will.
Or they could be a random shooter, just come in the building and start shooting.
Yeah, right.
That's why the ALs training is probably good. I, I thought about it, I was thinking, I was standing in my office thinking, if I heard some shots, what would I do? I'd go to the phone and call 911. I would try to figure out on my phone how to do a, what do you call it, loudspeaker?
Yeah.
Do a loudspeaker announcement.
I don't know how to do that.
But I think we can do it, there's a number you can dial.
I'll tell you.
Okay, okay.
And, and announce at loudspeaker, and then hide.
Should we just adjourn? We don't have anything else, right?
Yeah, and then we need to go back in the solid waste and adjourn if we want to.
Yeah, Bill, did Bill send us?
He did send something, and I think I forwarded it to you.
For the next agenda, right?
Yeah, but we don't have to do it today, we can do it. The increase is between $3 and $5, it's not very much. The reason he wants to do it is because with the single stream, you don't get as much money for any of it, because it's not as clean.
Right.
So it will help to, wouldn't add anything to the income, but it would help to offset the loss. So if you're comfortable doing it, you got a copy, if you're comfortable doing, we'll do that. So we'll recess Commissioners' meeting, go into Solid Waste District Commissioners' meeting, and would you like to do a journal entry approving the increase for the commercial pickups contract?
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Should we, a roll call on that Kathleen, or not?
We could, yeah, all right.
Tell me again, what it is?
Tell me again, what it is?
It's increasing, it's having a new contract, which includes an increase in...
The commercial?
The commercial billing for the commercial pickup collection, and you have a copy of it, right, on your computer? So, that's what we're making a motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
So, now we get out of solid waste.
Now, we will, do you, would you give a motion to adjourn solid waste?
So moved.
I'll second the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, we're adjourned, and we'll go back now into county commissioners' meeting. And is there any business now to come before the county commissioners?
Yes.
We already approved the journal entries, correct?